Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the combined work in regular session for the month of July to order. The time is 7:01 PM. Please pause for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much. All right, we will move down to public participation. We do have one public participant for tonight. So Mrs. Coggan will read the directions and if you will come to the microphone on my right, please, the podium.
Yes, it's Bishop Clarence Harris. All right. Public participation is the time that the board has set aside to encourage you as members of our community to voice your opinion on any matter either included on or excluded from the printed agenda. A maximum time of five minutes will be allotted to a single individual or a single topic based on the number of requests. Complaints against any employee of the school system will not be heard unless the complaint has been submitted in writing to the superintendent at least seven days prior to the board meeting. If unresolved, any personal complaints about school personnel must be put in writing for the board to review in executive session. Personal attacks against any member of the board will not be tolerated. Once the time for public participation has passed, discussion of topics will be restricted to board members only. Thank you in advance for complying with our request.
Thank you. My name is Bishop Clarence Harris. I'm an educator here in the Newton County School System, have been there six years. And I'm also a business executive and a presiding bishop over churches throughout the U.S., having traveled extensively for the past forty-five years abroad, touching every continent, and bringing all that experience and knowledge to the classroom here in good old Newton County. First of all, I thank you all for allowing me an opportunity to come before you all and speak. The most noble profession is education because every discipline begins with us teachers. So thank you all for the opportunity and your service to the community. I've had the pleasure of meeting with the interim superintendent, Mr. Roundtree, my principal, and my soul brother Trey, Mr. Bailey, and many others. Their guidance and the things I'm about to share with you in this brief time going to speak. Things I will share are things I believe that are very detrimental and may save some people in our system lives that may also, over time, preserve many teachers' careers. Students, you know, that are in our classes today will one day soon be our next-door neighbors and our future caretakers. Because of that, there I believe that even though there are many systems already in place to help and work and direct our students, we must also work to put in practice the things that we have on paper, and that is our mission statements and our vision statements as well. There are six things. I did send you all a full eight-page letter prior to this meeting. Hope you had a chance to look at that and review it in great detail, so I can hit the minor points and just kind of move on for tonight's meeting. America's changed dramatically since the 1950s and 60s when I first knew of education, especially being born in Alabama, raised in New York, and also traveled extensively throughout the world. Respect, honor, obedience, and also have been replaced with profanity, violence, murder, assault on teachers, you know, and this is not just in our country, it's seen pandemic globally. The airways have been filled also with these such nuances, and also therefore has put the profession of education at risk. It's an at-risk profession because beginning teachers right now only last about a tenure, about three years, because of the things they encounter in the classroom. And I'm here because of my experience in working with teachers here locally in many other counties throughout our nation, especially in Florida, Washington, D.C., where I first started at the Chaplain Howard University back in 1980. I taught also classes at the Site Rehab Center in 1976 in Miami, in classes in sports and also imaginative sewing many years ago. But school discipline cannot be compromised. We cannot have a system where we have blue laws, like in a national setting. Blue laws are you have laws on the books but not enforced. So be an advocate about make sure we enforce our laws, we help parents, and also help them understand their roles, their role as parents, because many in this generation need many help and skills in that particular area. I'm looking for ways that we and I and may others in our community to work with the school board to create an atmosphere for students to be, take ownership in the school systems so they can help police and also help us in our concerns to make a safe and working environment for all of our colleagues. The essence of violence in our culture is unprecedented. It's manifested in our schools, our homes, our communities, and every corner of our nation. We cannot acquiesce, and also we cannot allow, neither can we minimize misconduct, and if doing so, the support of the first, the first-line defenders of, I guess, education, the teachers, is also critical. Having this all three things said, respect and authority is right now out the window, and it's critical we understand that the baby boomers, that my generation, have done a poor job in addressing their children, and most importantly, the COVID babies who right now feel a sense of entitlement, you know, in education, not doing their work yet being promoted. We cannot afford to have students be socially promoted, we cannot have students also to graduate functioning illiterate, whereby which as a business personnel, they are not, they're not very employable, because the work ethics they have, they lack. And as I wrap this up, it's very important that as a civil rights leader, my prayer is that Dr. Monster King's dream of brotherhood will not become a nightmare, and that our social conflicts that are going on today, that we can work to make our community a much better place and our school system a safer place. In conclusion, for decades I have taught sociology, and eighty-five percent of that in sociology is what we taught that is basically socialization, fifteen percent education. We need to do a better job and not succumb to what the Khrushchev said back in the 1950s, that this right bastion of America will implode. We must keep our country together, our students together, support educators in our community. Thank you for your time. And also, we have put our hands to the plow. Many teachers are really working previously, and they're working to make our country better and our county as well. We just need your support in all endeavors to make sure that while we do these things, you understand what's going on in the classroom. So we invite you all to come, maybe one or two days a week, a year rather, to volunteer to become substitute teachers, to see firsthand what we encounter. So thank you for your time and opportunity, and all the board members, Madam Chairman and Inter Superintendent, and all you beloved servants of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, five zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes. Sarah, second.
Second.
Moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Five zero, superintendent's report.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Roundtree, good evening. In the financial report, the special purpose local option for education sales tax distribution for May was $1,972,345, an increase of $127,405 from the previous month. The title ad valorem tax collection for May was $608,409. And finally, the business services department has begun the process of closing out fiscal year 2023. As part of that work, July and August tax collections are accrued into the fiscal year as well as payroll expenses for ten- and eleven-month employees. And the final ending fund balance will be available to you to review at the October board meeting. And Madam Chair, that is the financial report.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. Are there any questions for the financial report? Okay, I'll move on to the strategic report, and then I'll call for a motion.
Okay. Good evening. I would like to share a few items from the superintendent's report, starting with the student achievement and success area. Newton County School System Secondary Education Department staff hosted 165 students for initial credit courses during June. Initial credit courses are for students who are taking high school courses for the first time and students who are interested in getting ahead. The classes are similar to the Newton County School System self-paced program where students work independently. However, a content teacher was assigned for each course to provide guidance and support. Students taking initial credit courses are able to access the teacher for questions throughout the duration of the course. In the area of high-quality workforce, during the month of June, the elementary math ambassadors created Google Slide presentations based on new math learning plans from the Georgia Department of Education. They also worked with Ms. Tooks, math specialist, to revise the report, to revise the report card rubrics and provide evidence for grades one through three standards-based report cards. In the area of culture, climate, and communication, with a simple post on social media by the Newton County School System Special Education Department staff, several donations were received for the upcoming school year. Local churches in the community donated decorations used for their summer programs to the department's staff. The special education personnel will use these game-inspired decorations for activities such as the back-to-school bash, Special Olympics, family game night, and other parent meetings throughout the year. The crowdsourcing posts also inspired churches to share materials with other churches, thus forming new partnerships. And lastly, in the area of organizational and operational effectiveness, on Tuesday, June 27, 2023, school nutrition department staff collaborated with the Portidale City Police Department team to host the Seamless Summer Options Food Bus Event. Approximately sixty-five meals were served. And Madam Superintendent, this concludes the superintendent's report. Madam Chair?
We know who you're talking about. None of us said anything. We know, we know, Dr. Mosley. All right, may I have a motion for the superintendent's reports, please, as item A and B?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved, moved and second. Any questions, comments? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero, thank you. Old business?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, item A in old business, the superintendent recommends the adoption of policy IEDA, which addresses recess and unstructured break time as required by Georgia law. This item was originally presented at the May 16, 2023, regular meeting of the Board of Education and is now ready for board action this evening. Item A.
Okay, thank you so much. So I need a motion for item A.
Second.
I need a second.
Second.
Okay, been moved and second. I'll call for the question. If there are no questions or comments. So it's set on the table, allowed for public input. Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, five zero. Item B?
Item B, the superintendent recommends the adoption of revisions to policy DIB that address updates to accounting standards. This policy was also originally presented on May 16 at the regular meeting of the Board of Education, and it is ready for board action this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. May I have a motion for B, please?
Second.
Been moved and second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. New business, item A.
Item A, the superintendent recommends the adoption of the fiscal year 2024 millage rates as follows. The first millage rate for maintenance and operation, sixteen mils, debt service millage rate zero, which is a total millage rate of sixteen mils, and this recommendation follows much deliberation and discussion and three public hearings. And item A is ready for board action, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion for item A?
Second.
I need a second.
Second.
Been moved and second. Floor is open for discussion or questions.
Sure, if I may. Yes, three different hearings and much deliberation. I appreciate the adjective there. I think I got that right. I know the superintendent is recommending a millage rate of sixteen point zero, but I think based on the evidence presented earlier, I won't have to go through all of it again, but we did, we approved a budget earlier in the year, a tentative budget, for $229 million based on an estimated digest of, I believe it's four point eight billion, bringing us a revenue, the school system, a revenue of $217 million. We all approved that budget, knowing that it was, you know, twelve million dollars less revenue. The expenses were twelve million dollars higher than the revenue that's going to come in. And I would just say, based on that same logic, tonight, or the last three meetings, the millage rate hearings, we were presented with information that had a new, actual total digest number that was over five billion. And if we were to consider a rate of fifteen point five as a millage rate, the full millage rate rollback is fourteen point zero four zero, but to meet in the middle at a fifteen point five millage rate, that would offer us just as much or more revenue as we created a budget for and approved a budget for earlier in the year, or month ago. So I think based on the same reasoning in which we passed the budget, recognizing we were going to get $217 million in revenue, now we have the opportunity at fifteen point five mils to receive more revenue at $218 million and end the year with a higher ending fund balance. So I would just encourage the board to at least entertain, based on the same logic in which we passed the budget earlier, that we use that same logic to accept the same amount of revenue, if not a little bit more, at a millage rate of fifteen point five. And I understand that's not the recommendation of the superintendent, and I apologize for your first recommendation going against that. But I would just like for us to be consistent with the logic in which we passed the first budget, and then also offer the taxpayers a little bit, you know, another half, half point on the millage rate. It seems like that's at least a logical suggestion, something for us to consider tonight. Thank you.
Any other questions, feedback, comments?
Yes, I think we can follow the logic, but maybe not all of it, and the primary logic that we should follow. I think one is that we couldn't survive the budget if we just use the fifteen number that you're talking about, which will give us, of all the numbers, approximately two million dollars above what we're budgeting for. And that don't include all of the things that we are planning on doing for the next year. I just think it put us down too low to manage effectively using the logic. We need a millage rate that going to give us the revenue that we can logically use and meet our obligations financially consistently. Because if we don't have it, when there's an opportunity to get it, we lose out, and more than anything else, our students lose. So I support wholeheartedly the sixteen, and if I had support, I would go the sixteen point eight, because that was, give us additional revenue that we definitely can use. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Coggan, you had something?
Yes, and I am all for reducing, anytime we can, the millage rate, anytime we can. And unfortunately, even if we go back to the rollback rate, just as you pointed out this morning, it's still, taxpayers are still going to have to pay an increase from what they paid last year because our property tax evaluations went up, which we don't control. So no matter if we roll it all the way back down, people are still going to see that increase. However, I'm very worried about rolling it back too much because we have, I know this only affects this year, and we can, we will review the budget next year and review the millage rate. And I know we've already discussed about some additional funds that need to be put into the budget that were unforeseen back in May. So that's what worries me, is being able to sustain these funds, the funding for FY25. Even though, like I said, we review it every year, it just worries me that we don't have enough in reserves. So if the property values decline and we don't get the, what is it, five billion dollars, I think it was this year, something four billion, I just worry that we're not going to be able to sustain next year, and we're going to have to raise the millage rate in extreme amount instead of just a point here or there, or, you know, half a percentage or something. So I'm hesitant to go all the way down to a lower rate than what is recommended by the superintendent. But like I said, I completely understand and want to do it, but I just worry about sustaining. And looking at our budgets, you can't just think about it one year. We've got to be able to carry over and pay for it at least the next six months of that following fiscal year. So that's, that's it.
Any other questions or feedback?
I would just like to, if I can, I'll just respond.
Go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
Just because you guys have been doing this longer than I have, you've been through the recession, or I know, Mr. Johnson, you were at least here, you guys right at the tail end of it, right?
2010.
Okay, so I respect the wisdom that you guys bring, and as a, as a guy who's just eight years into it, I know I haven't seen all of that, I've just been in the good days, right? So it's easy for me to make this recommendation, or to go against the recommendation, rather, but I do appreciate the wisdom that you guys have. So while I probably will still cast a nay vote, I do, you know that I trust your decision-making and the way in which you guys have reasoned this, and I do appreciate it. I just hope that next year, if we have this opportunity, and there's still an uptick, that we can at least consider lowering the rate, because I do know that as the ESSER funds, what do we call it, sunset, as they, as those funds go away, all these programs that we've built, we are going to want to continue to have them because they're going to help close the, the learning gap, we know that. But how are we going to continue to fund those when the federal dollars go away? At some point, you're going to think some sort of course correction is going to happen, and we're going to have to reevaluate all the programs that we're looking at and decide what doesn't make it. Now, I would just encourage this board and the superintendent, whoever's here at the time, that we do that in the budgeting process and not when we get to the millage rate. Because when we get to this point, it really feels like our hands are a bit tied, we know how much revenue we really desperately need, and if it's going to be, we're going to need more revenue next year because more ESSER funds are, go away, and we still have to have these programs, I'm just concerned that we won't be able to keep up. If the economy does take a dip, I mean, we're going to be in a tough place, except that we have a really strong ending fund balance. Keeping the, going with the suggested millage rate this year at sixteen does give us a higher ending fund balance, that does at least make me comfortable to weather a storm. I just don't want to run all of the property taxpayers out of, out of the county when they see a four or five hundred dollar increase on their bill next year rather than what we could have at least gotten a, you know, two hundred and fifty dollar increase, three hundred dollar increase.
So let me add to that, something that I did not add when I added extra considerations that weren't on the slides earlier. So let me add one more thing to the thought process, and I know you're already going to vote the way you're going to vote, but when you talk about the ending fund balance, one of the things that I did not highlight, and it wasn't on Ms. Robinson's slide, and Mr. Roundtree didn't bring it up as well, is, as we talk about how the tax bills have increased, not on our behalf, but because people's property values have gone up, who's to say that everybody is going to pay that tax bill? Which then means that we may not get the funds that you keep talking about, that we're going to get those actual numbers, we don't receive those, that's how we pay our people. So let me also add that if we are unable, if we don't receive that check, that money to pay our people, we have to go in the ending fund balance to pay the people, the teachers, the custodians, the bus drivers, and that's not cheap. So we have to dip down in that fund to pay it until we get our monies. So that's something to also consider, because many people are talking about that.
Sure, and I, I believe that to be true. I think that's the benefit of having a healthy ending fund balance, having money in the bank. And Mr. Johnson said this earlier, which, not in this meeting, but I think was very pertinent, was that it's, it's a lot easier to make decisions when you have money in the bank. When you, when there's no money in the bank, it, decisions are made for you, and I don't, we don't want to get in that kind of situation, I understand. But you're, you know, I'm going to keep standing on this roster and saying, whatever we can do, I don't want to hurt the children, I don't want to hurt the teachers, not by a long shot, but also don't want to run out the property owners, I don't want to price them out of, of being in our community and supporting our school with their tax dollars. In just the last eight years, we went from spending two thousand dollars per student to four thousand dollars per student, in eight years, it's doubled. Now, I understand inflation, but that is well beyond the rate of inflation. I understand we are not fiscally irresponsible, like our, our team is incredibly good stewards of the funds we get, but I'm guessing that that per pupil dollar is attached to all those federal dollars we got. We were able to spend more local dollars on programs because the federal government was helping us with, with money. I'm just saying, that's going to change in the next one, two, and three years, and we're going to have to make an adjustment. If it's not the millage rate, it's got to be the budget, we got to look at it somewhere, is all I'm saying. If the property values continue to skyrocket, no one's going to be able to live in Newton County. So we do have to do what we can to help out where we can, but again, I understand.
With you saying that, I just need to add something, because I know how people take numbers and run, with you saying that without a little bit more to it, the two thousand to four thousand, you did say it's not on our behalf and stuff, and it's beyond inflation. I also want to add, because I want people to say, oh, well, they're, they're doing it wrong, they went from spending two thousand on a student to four thousand. Program costs have gone up, you guys, so let me, let me be clear on that, that that cost is not necessarily because of us, but programs that we have been had for a couple of years have gone up on pricing. So there you have an increase from that. So it's not because we're just kind of throwing money, but those programs have increased their prices. I just want to be clear on that before somebody say something differently based on what you said, without providing that content and that background.
And I want to, I know we can't get all of the comments we had in the last meetings into this meeting, but you did have a great comment that I would like to reiterate, that it's, all of the programs that we've added for FY24, where the ESSER funds are sunsetting, are counseling programs that, that the communities asked for. It's, we've finally got security in all of our elementary schools, like, that's something that the communities asked for. These are things that, we're not just, kids aren't going to school with gold watches that we're providing for them. No, it's programs that we know we desperately need, you know, and I'm now just belaboring the point, that it's, it's, it's a costly business of public education, and I appreciate everyone's due diligence and looking at this at all different angles and trying our best to prepare for the next year and the next year. So I've grandstanded enough, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so the motion on the floor is the recommendation of Superintendent Roundtree of sixteen point zero. I will call for the question. All in favor? Let me hear you say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let me hear you say the same.
Aye.
For one. Okay. Item B?
And item B, the superintendent recommends the instructional resources needed for the school system be purchased from the Really Great Reading Company, LLC. Total contract value fifty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars, forty cents. The early intervention program serves kindergarten through fifth-grade students who are at risk of not reaching or maintaining academic grade level in reading and/or math. Really Great Reading provides a comprehensive set of tools to help diagnose and teach students who demonstrate challenges in their foundational reading skills and help them to become fluent readers. The diagnostic assessment identifies a student's challenges and the skills he or she may, that they need to work on to overcome those challenges. This deals with Strategic Goal Area One, Student Achievement and Success. Purchasing documentation is there for your review, and the funding source is identified. Item B, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion for B?
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay, moved and second. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one, please. Is there a summary or measurement of the results that we'll get from this program that we can monitor?
And I thought Dr. Barr was just excited about the program, calling it a Really Great Reading Company.
Yes, we can, we can provide that information for you. We've used Really Great Reading over the last, I want to say, six years for our early intervention program, so we can provide the data.
So how can we get a briefing to board on a summary of a year's results or whatever however you mentioned, and let us know where we are in maintaining or observing that information?
Yes, sir, you can receive that information.
Okay. Well, you will see that we.
Yeah, we want a board presentation.
Right, okay. Thank you kindly.
All right.
And this is a renewal, by the way.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Mosley. I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Item C?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, and item C, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract awarded to illuminate education, be renewed for an additional contract term. Contract value is three hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars, thirty-five cents. Contract value is $386,313.35. Illuminate Education's comprehensive student assessment solution provides a platform to handle the school system's student assessment needs and documentation. The components of that solution are provided there for your review. This deals with strategic goal area one, student achievement and success. The contract documents are provided and the funding source is identified. And that is item C, Madam Chair.
Okay, may I have a motion for C, please? Okay, thank you. Moved in second. Floor is open for discussion. Having none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
5-0. Item D.
Item D, the superintendent recommends the approval of the 2024 Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Program Improvement Local Plan. In accordance with the Carl D. Perkins Career and Technical Education Act, each eligible local school system shall submit an annual local plan application for career and technical education. According to the Perkins Act, federal funds are tied to the date that the local plan is approved by the local Board of Education. Board approval will allow for these funds to begin to be used for the 2023-2024 school year, once they are available from the state. And that is item D, Madam Chair. And the plan is attached for review.
Thank you, Dr. Barr. May I have a motion for D, please?
So moved.
Okay, I need a, thank you. Floor is open for discussion or questions. Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 5-0. Item E.
Item E, the superintendent recommends the approval of the SME, which stands for the Society of Manufacturing Engineers Prime Program Agreement between SME Education Foundation and the Newton County School District. The contract value is $345,600. The school system has been awarded a $375,000 grant from the Georgia Department of Education to implement SME Prime Program within the manufacturing pathway at Newton College and Career Academy. In order to access grant funds, participating districts must agree to conditions and expectations of the Prime Program. SME Prime, and the Prime is for Partnership, Response, and Manufacturing Education, builds cost-effective and tailored manufacturing, engineering programs in high schools across the country, providing equipment, curriculum, professional development, scholarships, and STEM-focused extracurricular activities to students and teachers. Approval of this agreement will allow for the implementation of the program to begin August 2023. This deals with strategic goal area one. The program agreement and overview are attached for your review and the funding source is identified. And that is item E for consideration this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I need a motion for E, please?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Floor is open for discussion or questions.
I just want to say, big kudos to Dr. Smith and the CTAE program in our county. I think it's one of the best in the nation. And just applaud him and his team and their efforts and I will gladly give this my vote.
Okay, any other feedback? Having none, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Thank you. 5-0. Item F.
Item F, the superintendent recommends the talent management software needed for the school system be purchased from Power School. Total cost is $63,353.11. The Unified Talent or Talent Ed System is a comprehensive talent management platform and includes an electronic application, job posting board, hiring, and onboarding platform. Purchasing documentation is provided and the funding source is identified. And that is item F, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item F, I need a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion or questions? I'll call for the question. All in favor? Thank you. 5-0. Item G.
The superintendent recommends the purchase of digital educational resources from Discovery Education with a total cost of $78,200. Through its innovative platform, Discovery Education empowers educators with engaging multimedia content, interactive activities, and professional development opportunities. The company's extensive library of videos, virtual field trips, and interactive lessons cover a wide range of subjects catering to various grade levels and curriculum standards. Discovery Education's materials are designed to foster critical thinking, creativity, and collaboration among students, enabling them to explore and comprehend complex concepts in an immersive and interactive manner. And this is a renewal, deals with strategic goal area one. Purchasing documentation is provided, funding source identified. Item G for consideration, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Need a motion for G? Thank you. Moved in second. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item H.
Item H, the superintendent recommends the computers and associated items needed for the Career, Technical, and Agricultural Education Program be purchased from ByteSpeed LLC. A summary of those purchases are presented there for your review. School system will use a state of Georgia contract to make this purchase. Purchasing documentation is provided, funding source is identified. And that concludes item H.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for H, please?
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Any questions or discussion? I'll call for the question. All in favor? Okay, 5-0. Thank you. Aye.
In item A, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contracts and purchases with the following vendors be renewed for an additional contract term. The first is Sanitec Systems with a contract value of $55,000. The second is Horizon Software with a contract value of $36,124.62. As it relates to Sanitec Systems, the program includes all necessary chemicals and supplies as well as a detailed training on OSHA compliant work practices, safe food handling, following HACCP guidelines, and regular compliance site monitoring at all school nutrition program locations. Horizon's school nutrition software is a complete software solution that supports our school nutrition program. The contracts are provided for your review and the funding source is identified, and that is item A.
Thank you. I need a motion for Aye.
So moved.
Okay, moved in second. Any questions or discussion? Call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 5-0. Item J.
Another recommendation by the superintendent who went right to work and has lots of recommendations for this evening. Annual renewable contract for financial, for electrical services awarded to Osborne Electric Services of Covington, Georgia. The effective date will be July 8, 28, 2023, with an expiration date of July 27, 2024. Estimated contract value $200,000. The contract includes all necessary electrical services, including repairs, improvements, and new work needed by the school system. Contract documentation is provided and the funding source is identified. And that is item J, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I need a motion for J.
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Just grateful to see Covington vendors on here, contractors. Thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Thank you. 5-0. Item K.
An item K, the superintendent recommends a service truck needed for the facilities department be purchased from Covington Ford, contract value $49,588. Contract documentation is provided and funding source is identified, and that is item K.
Thank you. I need a motion for K.
So moved.
Been moved in second. Any discussion or questions?
More dollars back into the local economy. That's good stuff.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. 5-0. Item L.
Item L, the superintendent recommends the annual renewable contract with the Newton County Sheriff's Office, also located here in Covington, Georgia, be renewed for school resource officers for an additional contract term. The effective date will be July 1, 2023, with an expiration date of June 30, 2024. Total cost is $1,425,439.71. Contract documentation is provided and funding source is listed there for your review. Item L.
Thank you. I need a motion for item L, please? Been moved in second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 5-0. Item M.
Item M, the superintendent recommends the identified items be declared surplus and disposed of per board policy. That is item M.
Okay, I need a motion for M, please?
Second.
Okay, been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, 5-0. Item N.
Item N, the superintendent recommends the local board governance annual report be completed as required by the Georgia Department of Education. It is included there for your review, and that is item N.
Thank you so much. I need a motion for N, please?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. And everybody has checked their hours and signed off on them for this fiscal year, so we're all good. I'll call for the question. All in favor? Okay, thank you so much. Item O.
And finally, Superintendent Roundtree recommends the approval of personnel matters as discussed in executive session. Item O, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. I have a motion for item O for Superintendent Roundtree's first personnel recommendation. These people better be good, Roundtree.
I stand with you first.
We are holding you accountable.
Is that a motion? And I'll second if that's the motion.
Okay, Mr. Johnson motion, Mr. Bailey second. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? 5-0. Did nobody oppose it, Roundtree? Other matters of interest?
Just real quickly, Madam Chair, we started today our new teacher orientation under the tutelage of our Director of Secondary Education, Ms. Neely, and our Director of Elementary Education, Ms. Dr. Penny Mosley, as well as their coordinators, Ms. Heidi Coachman and Dr. Eric.
They're going to lead the team. Start over. Start over. You're the Bayes is saying about, they get at you.
The Bayes is going to say, I have too many and I can't remember their names. But it's difficult because they all pitch in and work. And of course, Dr. Thomas and Dr. Barr and their respective teams have also pitched in. They're at Eastside. They'll be there for tomorrow as well as Thursday, where we will also do the Teach For Tomorrow Technology Conference as well. I convened with them this afternoon because this morning when I was supposed to be convening with them, I was in the millage rate hearing. But they are an exciting group of people and they are excited about coming to Newton County and working. And I think we're going to be in really, really good shape. Now, we still have some positions we still need to fill. So if you're out there and you need a job in education and you're good, this is the place to come. But I just wanted to welcome all of our new teachers to our district as they began their new teacher orientation today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Any other?
A question, please.
Yeah.
Any number that you can give us in terms of what are we missing, how many?
Not yet. We're still, what we do after the meeting is we, HR will tomorrow will reconcile what was approved tonight. So I can give you an update at a later time, but they'll have to reconcile what was approved this evening once they get in tomorrow. So I don't quite know how we're looking right now, but I know we're better today than we were last week this time.
Okay, thank you. I also want to remind the community about all of the upcoming back-to-school events. There are a number of them. I think there are like two for Saturday, maybe one Sunday. Next week, there are like three or four on Saturday. So please take a look. I do think Sherri, did Sherri end up posting a collage? Somebody posted a collage of all of them. And then I do know that one of the elementary schools posted a collage. So if you go to Fairview Elementary Facebook page, I know they posted all of them on their Facebook page, all of the back-to-school events that's offered in the community. So do be sure to check out those things if you have kids that are headed to back-to-school this year. So make sure you check. And I want to thank the community people who have put those together from churches to individuals to organizations, from departments, everybody who had a hand in putting in some sort of event. We greatly appreciate it because it truly does take a village. So thank you for being our village with assisting us and assisting our students as well. And will the administrators be at one of the events, the Sheriff's Department event this year?
Yes, they typically come. We need to check and make sure that we've gotten word out to them and make sure they know. But yes, ma'am.
Okay, so their parents have an opportunity to see some familiar faces or some new faces of building leaders that their student is going to be at. Okay.
Madam Chair, I don't, this is our last meeting for the month, right? And next week is open house. Do you have the dates?
Just thought about that. Open house will begin next, Dr. Thomas usually. It begin, they begin Tuesday with the high schools. Thank you, Ms. Coggan. And then Wednesday will be the middle schools and then Thursday will be the high schools. I mean, the elementary schools. I'm trying to get the high schools there twice.
Now, we're going to need you to bring notes up here. So everybody got it. Tuesday is?
High school.
Okay, Wednesday?
Middle.
And then Thursday?
Elementary. And they're all on the website, too. They're posted on the website, too.
Perfect. All right. Anything else?
I'd just like to say, I thank you, Ms. Robinson, for a great job that you did here. And you and your team and Mr. Roundtree, congratulations again. You got all smiles and shine over here.
For now.
Well, I'm going to stick with the poor one.
All right, having no other matters of interest, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? Been moved in second. All in favor? Meeting adjourned 7:46 PM. Thank you.